I'd like to call tonight's select board meeting to order. It's Monday, November 25th, and as our custom, we'll start, if you can, Stan, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be the payroll journal. Payroll journal number 183 in the amount of $10,604.33.
I will move that we pay payroll journal number 183 in the amount of $10,604.33.
I second.
And move and seconded to pay payroll journal number 183 in the amount of $10,604.33. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting.
I will move that we accept the minutes of November, what's that?
You should have minutes.
Yeah.
Of November 12th, 2024. As printed.
My second.
I don't have the minutes. Is there a copy? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the select board meeting on November 12th. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, motion carries. Or assign those. Next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. There's an opportunity for any resident of the town of Pownall to step forward and be heard by the select board. Is there any public that wants to hear that? Seeing none, move forward to department head reports. Department heads reports can be viewed on their respective website. You click on the web, the department, and their reports are there. Is there any question from the select board of our one department head that is here?
None, sir.
You ready for winter? When do you anticipate?
Hopefully, with all said and done, hopefully, like February, but that's guaranteed.
Oh, we're all set until that comes.
Oh, yeah. I honestly wasn't anticipating that the truck to be ready until next year.
Great. Good news. Okay. Um, select board, everybody need a report at this time.
I have none, nothing, rather.
Okay. All right. Next item is new business. Deputy Clerk Pauline Cale.
She is a temporary person that will be filling in while Cale is gone. She has a great deal of experience in Lisbon, working near the front counter. And she's been in the office working with herself, and she seemed, they seem to get along just fine. And she's very comfortable with what she can do. So she'll be here just for three days, a week or so. And then be here on Wednesday. And I will be here, if that's okay with the board, all those three days.
Good with that?
For weeks.
Right.
Do we have, do we have the oath for her?
Yeah, you have an oath, too.
I don't have a packet. I wonder where my. I'll go down and get it.
Well, up inside. You just have to say, vote to read.
Okay. All right. So Andy, you want to move that Pauline Cale?
I will move that Pauline Kane be appointed as deputy clerk in the absence of Pascal Del Sol.
My second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Pauline Cale as deputy clerk pro temp while Pascal is on vacation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Yeah, great. Pauline, yeah.
Just deputy clerk?
Yeah. No, no, no.
Um, next is the letter from Chris and Mindy.
Right here.
Probably should be on the public record. I don't know if you have to read it or not.
We do have to read it. So Andy, I don't have a packet, so Andy.
Okay. "We hope this letter finds you well. We are writing to firmly express our opposition to the proposed short-term rental draft ordinance that was recently brought to our attention as currently drafted. As longtime residents of Pownall, we have spent the last three years working tirelessly to develop an abutting lot with a shared driveway into a private peaceful property that aligns with the rural character of the town. This has included significant investments such as a 550-foot driveway and 500 feet of underground power. These efforts were made to ensure the property is not visible from the road, preserving both local character and the natural landscape. As a small family, we have invested considerable resources to make this vision a reality, and our commitment to maintaining the rural character of Pownall is clear. As property owners, we fully understand and respect the importance of regulations that protect the town and its residents. However, we assert that it is our right to decide how to use our property, particularly when it comes to short-term rentals. We pay property taxes, and we have worked hard to ensure our property respects the town values. The proposed draft ordinance, as it stands, severely limits our ability to use our property in a way that supports our family's future. Our plans for this abutting lot are part of a larger vision to provide a home for our aging in-laws and offer our daughter an affordable housing option in the future. Short-term rentals are a critical piece of the puzzle that will allow us to afford the cost of building a new home in Pownall, with home prices now averaging $600,000 and climbing. This option is vital. Without the ability to rent short-term, it simply won't be possible for us to build a home that will meet our family's needs. We are particularly concerned about the two primary designations in the draft ordinance, primary resident hosted and primary resident unhosted, which present significant barriers to short-term rental use. The primary resident hosted option should be clarified to reflect the reality that a responsible and well-managed rental does not necessarily require the owner to live within the same residence. This designation should also encompass situations where the owner resides on the same property or lives on an abutting lot. These scenarios provide the owner with proximity to effectively manage the rental and promptly address any issues that should arise. Without any, without these adjustments, the current designations create unnecessary limitations for property owners who are fully capable of responsibly operating short-term rentals. And what they're referring to, I believe, is the 28-day limit per year for rentals. We also strongly oppose the proposed requirement for emergency lighting in entryways. If a property has received an occupancy permit, that should be sufficient to ensure that it meets all necessary safety standards and is ready for our guests. Emergency lighting is not a standard feature in rural homes, and enforcing this would be unnecessary, burdensome, and out of step with the character of properties in Pownall. The current occupancy permit process ensures safety and compliance with all codes and additional requirements are excessive and unwarranted. It is also important to acknowledge that short-term rentals are a practical solution to the town's affordability crisis. There are no viable affordable housing options being presented by the state or town, and short-term rentals provide property owners with a necessary means to cover the high costs of living here, essentially subsidizing their own properties through short-term rentals. This flexibility is key, allowing us to meet financial challenges of owning a home while also caring for our family. Additionally, visitors who choose short-term rentals in Pownall are looking for a quiet, authentic experience. They come to enjoy the local businesses, Ike Bradbury shop in Freeport, and experienced Pownall for what it truly is. These are not partygoers seeking a hotel. They are people who want to connect with the community. Denying them this opportunity hurts the town, its businesses, and its reputation as a peaceful, welcoming place. That is all.
We reside in the village district zone. We're in bends and breakfasts and various other businesses that permitted. Feels contradictory that short-term rentals should not be allowed in this area. Our property is located approximately 1,000 feet from a major intersection, a gas station, the town garage, and other businesses, features that clearly emphasize a mixed-use character in the village. While we believe short-term rentals should be allowed across the town, the village district is special, it will suit for them. Our draft ordinance lacks zoning distinctions, fails to address the permitting of short-term rentals in the village district, disregarding the unique nature of this area, which already supports commercial and hospitality-related activities. Allowing short-term rentals here would complement these existing root uses, providing a symbol of service on a smaller, more personalized scale while preserving town's rural character. These zoning provisions for short-term rentals, especially in the village district, would better reflect the town's needs and potential, helping to boost the local economy, support community growth. It's time to breathe new life into the heart of our town with a mix of businesses, not just the gas station and municipal buildings, but a vibrant hub that reflects the energy and opportunity our community has to offer. We ask the select board and planning board to take immediate action, revise the proposed ordinance to allow reasonable use of our properties. The current draft severely restricts our ability to provide for our family's future. We urge you to create a balanced approach that supports the growth of small businesses and allows property owners flexibility to live and stay in Pownall. Trust you can reconsider these regulations to work with property owners to ensure the town remains a place where we continue to invest, grow, and make free time and consideration. Cindy and Chris and Mindy, please. Andy, we're doing the reading.
Except for the last page, because I couldn't find it.
I'll come in late this afternoon on the same topic.
Right. So it's on the record. Next item on the agenda is holiday off December 24th, half day 25th, 26th. All in favor? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is mallet hall rental. Again, Andy, I don't have that, so can you read it? I don't have a packet. Thank you. Do you have an extra of the mallet hall repair as well?
I don't think I have.
Thank you, Kathy Hoag. Thank you. All right. So, duet room rental policy. We are talking about Jalen Gonya on this one. So the room should be a last choice. When a potential renter is choosing a space, the room should not be used for small events such as birthday parties. There are two other rooms, mallet hall, that are available. Pownall's IT Jalen Gonya will be the person to break down the AV equipment for an event, put her back out at the event. Jalen is paid on an hourly basis, and the service would be logged in with her hours. We want to include an extra fee with a rental fee. Jalen will need a seven-to-10-day notice for the use of space. She can work around her schedule. In any means, you're to book for that room. Jalen will need her own key to mallet halls. She can access any time of day of the week. Jalen will label and number each one of the mics to aid with replacement. The AV equipment will be stored in the storage room off the stage room with a rolling partition in front of it. We'll try this to start with no, to see if it works. Maybe that we want to store it out of view in the nook behind the elevator with a rolling partition plugging from you. That's a draft.
That's a draft.
What do we think? Andy?
I'm going to ask Kathy, did you talk to Jalen about this? Okay. Okay. Well, I didn't think you did, but I just wanted to make certain. I think it's very well put together, and I think maybe we should include an extra fee with the rental fee for the tear-down and setup. Yep.
I don't know if her hourly rate is or whatever, if you just.
I think if we want to cover her rate, it would be $100. We wanted to cover her hourly rate. But that's just my opinion. I'm only one of three. Kate, what do you think?
Um, I think we should double check and see if that is her hourly rate.
Okay, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to overcharge, but we don't want to undercharge either, so we should make it fair and equitable to both Jalen and and the town and the whoever is renting. So let's check into the, her hourly rate. Find out how long it's going to take her to tear it down and set it back up, and go from there.
Okay, would you contact her? Would you find out what her hourly rate is? She think it would take her, and then would you put that in as the, the rate? And we'll vote on that. If the board would be willing to vote on that as accurate fee to, so we don't have to come back, so we can get the policy out, okay?
As the rental form as well.
Yeah. We need to vote on that. Would you agree on that?
I would like to add, there's a typo, the word petition should be partition.
Okay, are we willing to accept this with the selling change and the being determined by Jalen's hourly rate and her determination how long it takes? We trust Ms. Hoag to be fair and put that down. All right, all in favor? Kathy, thank you for your work on that. Next item is the mallet hall repair. The mallet hall building grounds advising select board regarding the need to repairs the dormers in mallet hall. Town maintenance, pertinent, and road commissioner both looked at the project and agree that all five dormers will need steam for repairs. It'd be a big job that require a lift, new boards, replacing rotting wood, windows reframed or replaced, new wood painted. With select board's permission, we will ask Josh Clark, who recently installed the new floors and for estimate on the project, he's already expressed an interest in the job as well in giving us an estimate. We have been advised by our former town administrator, Becky Taylor Chase, that there's still grant money in the ARPA funds that can be used for this project. However, Becca stated, we need to go to town meeting to reallocate these funds. At last town meeting, we'll use ARPA funds for officer renovations. These have been completed. In order to use the rest of the funds, we need a new vote at town meeting to ask, use the remainder of the grant for mallet hall renovation and repair. The mallet hall building grounds committee recommends, one, obtaining an estimate, quote from Josh Clark. Two, putting a warrant item on June 25th town meeting vote to reallocate ARPA funds to be used for mallet hall renovations and repairs. Three, scheduling the project for the summer of 2025. Kathy Hoag Chair, Alice Patrick, Robert Hargreaves-Moran, John Peter, Peter Van Voyst, Mary Rewe, Dick Holg, Town Maintenance, Matt Nielsen, World Commissioners. What say you, Andy?
I think this is going to be probably more than $10,000, correct?
I have no idea, but what do you guys think?
So I'm guessing that we need to have three quotes.
So what Becky told me is that you don't need extra $10,000 or $1,000 for the ARPA fund.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
And I don't know if that amount makes a change to that, but that's why.
No, if it was coming from taxation, I think it would make, it would be different. I'm thinking in that line, sorry.
I think it would be convenient to get three quotes for that kind of money.
I, I think at least more than one would be a good.
Kate?
Are we anticipating that the amount may be more than what is remaining in the ARPA fund balance?
I asked, I asked if it could be, doesn't mean mallet hall. But I thought the ARPA funds listed in the mallet hall budget, or was it separate?
We could use that funding to all.
Yeah, that would be, I think it would be a separate account.
It should be.
I'll look it up. We have $45,000 left.
$45,000? I knew it wasn't fairly substantial number.
And I'm also, it seems to me like there, there's no ARPA deadline at this point anymore.
Because we voted to approve to. Andy?
So if if we were to approve this with I would still get more than one estimate.
Yeah.
Um, but would we want to add on to that some heat pumps for up here? And possibly the.
Working under the ARPA, you know, the previous subject.
Let's stick to this here. So, but let's fix this, and then there's money left over.
Yeah.
So you could get, um, you know, Tim Gidding and Greg Vosmas or some local contractors to get a look just to fulfill the three estimate laws. I'm not, yeah.
So Craig had mentioned to Dr. Dick, and I think then that, oh, of him having an interest in doing the work, and that he was going to have a, um, lift here at the church, which he did. It was called Dick, and they were gonna.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why we're in this spot now.
Absolutely, but he would, he would have, he would have an estimate just to fulfill the quote so that we would be in the right ballpark with Josh. He did a great job. All right, so with that caveat of getting two more quotes, would someone vote to approve A, obtaining an estimate from Josh Clark? B, after getting that estimate, putting a warrant item on June 25th town meeting? You'd have to include two other estimates on the article one, yeah.
And three actually.
Right. And then three, scheduling the project. So we could vote on that and move it forward.
Yep.
And back it off if estimates don't jive, right?
So I would, I would move that we approve obtaining quotes, three quotes for this project, and putting a warrant article for the June 25th town meeting to allocate, reallocate ARPA funds to be used for mallet hall renovations and/or repairs.
Good. Kate?
My second.
It's like, we're moving to second to obtain three quotes for repairs on mallet hall, specifically the dormers. And to, once getting those, to place a warrant item, article on June 20, 25, town meeting to reallocate ARPA funds to be used. Seeing that, any further discussion? All in favor, motion carries. Next item, Andy O'Brien under, uh, is there any other new business?
Can I just ask one more question for guys?
No.
I had a little thinking out to myself, more about rental in general. So all the community events that were running, everyone paid $25, even though the insurance and everything is covered on the recreation for me. But recently, I hesitate to bring this up. I just feel like we have a policy and a rental form. So the historical society is filming their annual meeting coming up next month. And Craig had noted to Pascal that these historical are exempt from paying any mental things. And I don't know what insurance probably is that. And so I just, I'm bringing it up because we have the policy, everyone's following it and dividing minds. And I don't know why they're exempt from it. They had a big event here. Craig did a really amazing presentation. And this room was absolutely packed to the hills. And I don't know what insurance covered that. It wasn't supposed to be on recreation. It's a concern. We need to watch insurance and if you're making everybody pay the same.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me look into it. I think the historical society is, is covered under a town function. Let me just, I know I have a document somewhere that, that.
Because if you're not a town appointed committee, I'm a gray area, I think.
Well, I think they're in the same gray area as the cemetery commission, which is one of those municipal mysteries. So just let me look and find it. Yeah, yeah. Uh, is there any other new business?
Yes.
Is this new business or old?
This is new business.
Great. Andy, you're on.
Over the past year, the capital asset planning committee has become aware of certain acquisitions funded by grants of equipment used in the business of the town. At its regular meeting on October 30th, the committee discussed whether any of the equipment acquired with grant funding should be included on the asset schedule of the capital asset plan. The criteria for the inclusion on the plan is that the acquisition or replacement cost of the item is $10,000 or more, and has been voted for inclusion in the plan by both the capital asset planning committee and the select board. A list of the items discussed at the October 30th meeting is provided below, along with the action taken by the committee. There were five items discussed by the capital asset planning committee, including the mallet hall boiler, the computer systems, the sound system and AV system that we're on right now, the acoustic materials in the duet room, and the generator at the North Pownall Fire Station. Of those, only the mallet hall boiler was voted approved to put on the plan by the capital asset planning committee and the sound system and AV system for mallet hall. They're asking that the select board vote to add the items that they approved onto the asset schedule for the capital plan.
Do you want to make a motion?
So I would move that we include the mallet hall boiler and the AV and sound system for mallet hall on the capital asset planning committee's capital plan. Computers are a budget item. Typically, they aren't all replaced at the same time. The generator was under the $10,000 threshold.
So just to be clear, a second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, so these have been approved by the capital asset.
They have.
Planning committee, but they need to be approved by us.
Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, so moves. Any other new business? Under old business, we have oaths to be voted on. So I'm going to move that West of Lake be appointed to the future facilities committee. Date of appointment to position, December 1st, 2024. Date of appointment to position, December 1st, 2024. Term expires November 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? I move that we appoint David Feinberg to the Future Fertilities Commission. Date of appointment to position, December 1st, 2024. Term expires November 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? I move that we appoint Brian Chipman to the Future Facilities Commission. Date of appointment to position, December 21st, 2024. Term expires November 30th, 2025.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussions? All in favor? I move that we appoint George Pottle to the Future Facilities Committee. Date of appointment to position, December 1st, 2024. Term expires November 30th, 2025.
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor? There we go.
That's probably other paperwork that I stuffed in there.
This is just the volunteer forms.
Okay.
Mrs. Peters has already been oaths. There we go. Dave Albin's time.
Fantastic. I'll take them to the first meeting. I'm guessing I'll have to call the first meeting. And while we're on the subject, if you have any resident members of the Public Works Department, it would be nice to have at least one of them on there.
I know.
Okay.
All right. I have before me the AP warrants. AP warrant number 19, no, 13. The warrant I have is 13. Which should make sense.
You had it up in the AP warrant as well. Today, number 19, you should, you haven't finished it. Then I'm sure why that's taking my.
Well, the warrant item I have right here is AP warrant 13.
13?
Yeah. So let's approve this, what I have.
Well, the last the last one was warrant number 12, so.
Good investigative work, Mr. O'Brien. So I would like to move to approve the AP warrant 13 in the amount of had it here.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve AP warrant number 13 in the amount of $64,617.63. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Sign that, please. Is there any other old business? Is there any correspondence?
None from here.
Is there any other business, business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Harry?
Yeah.